To the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic of which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, living, free, and just as for all.
Okay, thank you, thanks for coming. We'll, uh, tonight we sort of our normal, uh, meeting items will run through with commentary and explanations from our department heads and the village administrator. Uh, then we'll go to citizen comments on those items and then, uh, towards the end we'll, uh, reconvene the, uh, hearing on the proposed changes related to the 555 Stewart Avenue. Okay. Uh, we have duly noticed this meeting, we have the full contingent of our trustees. The meeting is duly noticed and, uh, we have a full corner. Thank you. Okay, so if we could first, uh, deal with agenda items, uh, Swazi or department heads, anything in particular you want to point out?
Yes, Mayor Trustees, Mayor Trustees, last year, the board was in ZENS with current budget process and again this year, the, um, consulting firm, uh, Public Technology Solutions, they have helped us, uh, avoid off cyber security attacks. In their first weeks here, they helped restore ransomware attack. They have updated all our servers with the current security patches, they have changed where we go passwords. They have protected our environment with upgraded equipment. And, uh, so we're renewing it this year. I just want to point out that, uh, the contract itself needs a couple of tweaks to the language. So I'd like the board to approve this tonight, but I'd like it to be recorded by the village clerk and the village attorney this evening, that is subject to review and approval by the village attorney.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions we think we need to explain or? I'd like to, uh, if we could talk a little bit about, uh, we do number eight cam? You can't? Do you have this, uh, somewhere? We decided, uh, as a ward a little while ago, it was time to, uh, revise the handbook, probably most of you haven't seen it in a long time, but, uh, we use, uh, you can get it downstairs at the, uh, front desk, but we also send it out to each new residence. Were we, I don't remember, were we planning on mailing it to everyone?
No.
Just new residents. But it'll be available on the website. And I think it has not been done in probably twenty-five, thirty years. So we thought it might be time to revise it. Just quickly do a couple snapshots of it.
And we also email it to, uh, POAs, so the city can forward it to their members. Thank you.
Okay, I can't take credit for this because Carissa, our public relations consultant, did the handbook. But unfortunately she has two children home tonight that are sick.
It's hard to carry around. So we'll just flip through a couple pictures, uh, pages around, just flip through to.
Okay, so just show us some of the.
We've updated, uh, large portions of it. Uh, tried to make it match up with covering the policies and procedures and obviously numbers and contacts and all that.
The village departments have been updated with new phone numbers, of course, since, uh, twenty, thirty years ago, we've had a few changes in departments.
It'll be a lot easier to see.
So basically it has a new cover, but the important part is that we reviewed every single number. All the information upgraded sanitation information, we upgraded phone numbers, made sure they're accurate, revised in the language. You won't find specific names.
You won't find specific names now, like my name, the head of DPW, you'll see, uh, director of DPW, village administrator. So all the numbers been tested, corrected, make sures, you know, fix up some fonts, some typos. But basically modernized the, uh, the book. And also it goes into the history, the stewards. It talks about, these are general telephone numbers. This is the organization of the village, it illustrates the POAs right here, breaks it down by department. It talks about water billing and some of the, some of the specific things related to some of the, um, areas of the village, like water billing cycles and how bills are calculated, so it does give you a little bit of a shorthand, one-on-one, some of our, our department practices for events, case emergency. So here's a village map, it shows some highlights of the areas, Adelberry University, between the park swimming pool, fire stations. So, uh, talks about grass clippings and, and rubbish and all. So basically it's, it'll be online and it'll be used to send out to residents to welcome them and to acquaint them with the different services. And here's the school district and some of the regulations. It's not a complete guide, but it's, uh, it's handy and it's, uh, things very useful, so. I'm glad we got to update this after thirty years and I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you. Again, anyone else have any questions? Also, I was, I guess it'll be Kevin and Joe on our benches. Number twelve?
Yeah, this is another part of the Streetscape project, uh, which is going to have an impact sooner than later. You know, we're, uh, we did the, Joe did the research and we have the new waste receptacles coming. All of the benches, uh, all of the wood benches will be replaced on our seventh, uh, Newland Park Road and on, on Franklin. Uh, they'll all be changed out. So we, the style bench that we, uh, are proposing here is the same bench that we've used at St. Paul's. Uh, they're about thirteen years old, we have had no issues with them. Uh, they look as good as the day they went installed, so they're a real nice, uh, bench. And, um, so we're making that recommendation tonight, we look forward to putting that in.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? What's the timeframe you think, Kevin?
Probably eight weeks, eight weeks, then we can start installing.
Will install or will they?
Will install.
My, I just have a question on, uh, the fireworks display, it says coordination with, uh, police, which of course, but isn't also with fire department? Should be, right? Anybody else have any questions on agenda items of the board? Staff or some comments, they want to make other agenda items? Missing? Okay, uh, this portion of the meeting, we just generally open up to topics that, uh, people want to raise from the board or from staff generally, anything that needs to be discussed or people want to discuss or issues that need to be raised? No? None? Okay, thank you. And on your side, Mr. Swazi?
Joe, where do we stand on the water tower? I know we asked, slowed down because of the problem, is that?
It's actually within the, um, we had gotten a response from DEC asking for some revisions to our soil remediation. We made those changes, uh, they accepted the changes and then they asked us to enter into an agreement, a written agreement with them, uh, to move forward. We submitted the written agreement with that, to them earlier this week. We're waiting to get response on what we submitted to them.
You have any idea when we can start?
I was hoping to have everybody end this week, um, hoping we'll have maybe by tomorrow, um, or early next week. As soon as we get that approval, as soon as they agree to.
Contract.
The contract, we're ready to mobilize, so.
But there's another step, they, you have the National Health Department, we have to.
We do, but they tend to fall in line with DEC, they're not going to disagree with what the DEC do, so.
Would, um, so what are the steps? Do we clear out the wooded area?
We clear the wooded area.
Or will that happen both at the same time?
When the tower comes down, um, instead of remediating the soil now, we will take the tower down and then remediate the entire area because digging has to be done anyway for the valves and piping, so, um, and at that point the soil will be tested and, uh, we'll dispose of it as, as necessary.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to note, uh, tomorrow night's the Belmont Related Festival, hope everyone can come, it's usually a good time. Everyone is welcome. Starts at six, okay? Like work for them? And, uh.
John Wolf, six o'clock, four, festival starts?
Yes.
And Seventh Street gets closed around Porch.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Uh, one other note, um, I'm not sure if Bob's here tonight, but, uh, Bob Cunningham has, uh, decided to retire from serving on our zoning, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals. He's been on it for a long time, we should thank him, he's graciously helped us out for a long, long time, um, so. Oh, he's not here tonight, but anyways. Uh, if you see him on the street, thank him. And hopefully we'll get him in here and, uh, thank him, uh, properly, but, uh, again, thank you very much, Mr. Cunningham. Okay. None? I guess we'll move to, uh, any citizens' comments on agenda items, please? Okay. See none? No one wants to sample the bench or anything else? Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, I guess, uh, next item I would like to get a motion to approve our minutes of May twenty-four, two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Kriyas makes that motion, Mr. Delaney seconds that motion, all those in favor of approving the minutes of May twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. unanimously approved, except for Mr. Hayer, who was not here, he was abstaining on that.
Yes.
Thank you. It's the most important meeting of the year. Doc his bed. Okay. Uh, okay, if I could get the, uh, motion, uh, absent any other questions on agenda items from the trustees, on approval of the items on the consent calendar. Trustee Delaney, uh, makes that motion, can I get a second on that motion? Deputy Mayor Truve makes that, seconds that motion, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar. Enamish me to approve, thank you very much. Okay. So we will now move on to the next portion of our meeting. Tonight we're, uh, continuing the public hearings related to our proposed, uh, the proposed residential development on the property of known as five-five-five Stewart Avenue. Uh, Mr. Levin, can you hear someone? Okay, great. Uh, Mr. Levin has acted as our special counsel in this, uh, uh, project. He'll summarize the proposed legal challenges, changes to the current zoning of the property and related matters, and a short summary of the proceedings taken to date. Uh, I'll also ask him to provide just a short general overview, because we've seen and heard many comments regarding IDAs and how IDAs, uh, work and that process. Uh, we've stated many times, we don't grant IDAs. We don't have any authority to approve a project or disapprove a project, because a project developer may seek or obtain an IDA. Neither way may we impose a condition that a developer may not apply for IDA financing. I'll repeat that. We may not, under law, state law, impose a condition that a developer may not apply for IDA financing or obtain one. The town of Hemstead and Nassau County have their own separate IDA hearings and procedures and boards. They decide and receive all those applications. We'll then have representatives of the developer provide a short summary, which I think will include some pictures or drawings, uh, much of which is presented previously. There's listening, comments from the public on this topic. Each speaker is limited to four minutes, there's no sharing of time. If you have two minutes of time, you're not allowed to give someone else those unused two minutes. There's no reason that comments can be conveyed and communicated in four minutes. If you have comments in writing, you can of course submit those comments tonight in writing, which will be part of the record and part of our consideration. So if you have written comments and it exceeds four minutes, just hand them in and we will make them part of the record. Uh, we are again here to receive comments, we're here to gather information, which includes public input and other information to assist us in rendering a decision. This hearing, like every other hearing on a lot of topics, is not a question and answer proceeding. Board members may choose, if they like, to respond to a question, but that will be rare. The developers' representatives may choose to answer questions or may ask the developer to provide information as we go along. You may ask the commentators a question. The goal of any such question is to understand the comments being offered. It may be necessary for members of the board to ask a question in order to fully understand the comments being made. You may interject to correct a statement presented as fact when it is not. We do not do so to embarrass anyone. We want a record based on facts. Regrettably, sometimes what occurs is that comments are communicated to those in the meeting and outside the meeting as fact when they are not. As the old saying goes, you're entitled to your opinion, but you're not entitled to your own version of the facts. We are not voting tonight on this issue. Again, the purpose of this hearing is to receive information. We will then take such information and process it individually and then together and render a decision. We expect to make such decision at the June twenty-first meeting of the board. After the hearing this evening, the board will discuss and may vote upon a determination as to the viable impacts of the proposed zoning law and the proposed development. Again, we tend to make that on the twenty-first. Lastly, again, some ground rules. Every speaker is limited to four minutes. Discussion on this matter can be made in a civil manner. We know that on any topic passions run high and sometimes commentators, including ourselves, get heated and may make a statement or have a tone that's not intended. On our side, we apologize in advance should that occur. However, as you expect us to be civil and respectful, we expect the same from you. Members of the board, we remind you, like many of you, are taxpayers. We are your neighbors. We have children in the school system. We are retirees. Anything we decide in this matter, like almost everything else that comes before us, has the possibility of impacting us personally in the same manner it may impact you. We're spending considerable time, as we always do, on this matter and please do not respect us by thinking that we do not care about this point or that point. We respect your statements, please respect our positions. As we often hear the refrain, "You're not listening to us," I assure you, we are listening to you. Just like you may disagree with your spouse or children or neighbors on any other matter, let's say, you know, Red Sox are better than Yankees. It does not mean, it does not mean we're not listening. You can listen, wife can listen, but still disagree. Okay. Uh, lastly, insults will not be tolerated. Inappropriate and disrespectful comments and then others will not be tolerated. Speaking over others will not be tolerated. Please do not sit in the back and talk in the background. Let everyone who wishes to speak have their say in a polite and respectful manner and allow those present to hear other commentators. Thank you very much. So with that, I will ask for a motion to open the hearing. Trustee Delaney makes that motion, trustee Delaney seconds that motion. Enamish vote to open the hearing, I would ask Mr. Levin to give us sort of a legal summary of what we're asking of.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to apologize for my back being turned to people, it's, uh, the nature of the seating in the room, uh, so I get to sit at the desk here. And, uh, I also apologize for what may be overly lengthy opening remarks, uh, but the mayor asked me to cover a number of subjects before we get into the meat of the hearing. Uh, this is, as the mayor stated, a continued combined public hearing with respect to a proposed local law which would amend the village zoning regulations uh, regarding uses that are permitted in the RT district. And also with respect to a special permit and site plan, uh, for proposed development at five-five-five Stewart Avenue. There are two areas of the village which are in the RT district at the present time. This law does not change that, they will still be the same two areas. One of them is the property bounded by Eleventh Street, Washington Street, South Street or Supreme Court Drive South and roughly a hundred and twenty-five feet west of County Seat Drive. In that area, there are various county offices, parking lots, the Supreme Court parking lot and the new Family Court Building, which is under construction. The other property that's in the RT district is the property at five-five-five Stewart Avenue. These are, again, I say, the only properties that are affected by the zoning change. Since the ones, uh, off Eleventh Street are all in present use for governmental purposes, um, it's not likely that the zoning that's RT is going to make any difference at those properties. But if this zoning amendment were approved, it would not set a precedent for any other property in the village. It's a legislative act, which is up to the trustees to determine where an appropriate place, if any, for this revision to an RT use is. No other property can be put into an RT use without the approval of the board of trustees. So the mayor mentioned that the village is acting under a federal court judgment, uh, which requires the village to include affordable housing in any residential development that contains five or more units. Uh, the application that's under consideration would allow development of five-five-five Stewart Avenue for a one-hundred-and-fifteen unit multifamily residence, of which fifteen units would be designated for affordable housing as required by the federal judgment. So the proposed local law, which is part of tonight's hearing, uh, would amend the existing RT regulations to permit development of this property subject to first obtaining the permission of the board of trustees for multifamily residential use on plots of at least three acres and no more than five acres. This proposal, the site plan and the proposed local law, were extensively reviewed by the village's zoning change review committee and by the village's planning and environmental consultants at H2M Architects and Engineers. The zoning change review committee favorably recommended this proposal to the board. And this proceeding has been going on since then, that's when the public hearings started. We've had several public hearings so far and the application and the proposed law have also been sent to the Nassau County Planning Commission uh, for their review. Those of you who've been here previously have heard me explain the process we have to go through by state law to consider the zoning change law and also the development proposal. The Nassau County Planning Commission, after its review, issued a recommendation that the board act as it deems appropriate and did not recommend that the village require any changes or modifications, uh, to the application or the proposed law. So the proposal before the board tonight meets all the conditions of the proposed zoning amendment with one exception, which I think will be discussed this evening. There is in the proposed law, um, and I'm going to give you the summary of what the amendments in the law are. There's a proposal in the law for the, uh, height of the proposed building in one particular part to exceed the forty-five foot limit. And the developer has requested some additional relief from that height limit, uh, due to the proposed location of an amenity in the building. Um, I understand the developer is going to discuss that with us tonight, may have some additional information. Uh, and then we're going to have a further discussion of this as well, so that we can settle on the final language of what the proposed zoning law will be. So before we move on to the next meeting. The, the board of trustees, as I said, has had several public hearings on the proposed law and the proposed development. We've heard very extensive presentations by the developer and comments from the public. And tonight's hearing is a continuation of that process. So it remains to be seen and it will be decided by the board after interested persons are heard this evening, uh, whether the public hearing portion of the review process, uh, will be closed tonight or whether it will be continued to another date. Um, the co- if the board does, uh, I'm going to mention this again later, but if the board does decide to close the public hearing tonight, um, I'm going to ask it to also allow comments to be submitted in writing, uh, for an additional week. Uh, and if the board continues the hearing to June twenty-first, which the mayor indicated was the, that's the next date for this application, there would of course be another hearing on that evening. So simultaneously with this public hearing process that we've been going through uh, and in compliance with its obligations under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the board has also been receiving public comment with respect to the potential environmental impacts of the project. And they've also received recommendations from H2M regarding those potential impacts. So in order that the public understand the remainder of the process, which the board is required to follow, uh, the board's going to continue to hear public, to hear public comments tonight, as well as anything that the developer may wish to say. And the board can ask questions to obtain, uh, further information to help itself make those decisions. And after hearing the comments, the board will make a decision whether it's going to close the hearing tonight and set a deadline for comments or continue the hearings to another date. At, later at the meeting, uh, I'm also going to ask the board to discuss their determination as to potential environmental impacts. Under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, uh, the board can make one of two decisions with respect to environmental impact at this point. Uh, the first is it can conclude that the project is likely to have significant adverse environmental impacts and it needs facts, not speculation or, um, just people's rumors. Uh, it needs facts to back that up, that there are significant adverse environmental impacts likely to occur which require further detailed study. This type of decision is known as a positive declaration. And as I say, it must be based upon facts, not conjecture. The second option open to the board is it can conclude that the project is not likely to have significant adverse environmental impacts, which would require a further detailed study. And basically saying they have a sufficient study. This type of dec- decision is known as a negative declaration. The board's environmental consultants at H2M have recommended a negative declaration. So if the board does issue a negative declaration, you know, it is not precluded from considering environmental factors in any decision it eventually makes, whether to approve the project. And it's not precluded from including in any approval that it may make, conditions that the board believes, based on the facts, to be necessary to mitigate any environmental or other impacts. So one last item before we turn to tonight's hearings. Uh, at public hearings previously, there has been a lot of discussion about the developer's stated intention to apply to the industrial development agency and the effect that would have on property taxes to be paid by the developer or the owners of the property in the future. First, it must, have to be understood that the village cannot prevent the developer from applying for IDA assistance. State law determines whether that assistance is available, whether the project is eligible for it and state law allows any eligible party to make that application. We can't change this. We can't put in our decision that they're not permitted to make that application and we can't turn down a project that otherwise would get approval because they might make that application. If there is an application made to the IDA for financing or any other assistance, notice of that application will be given to the village, it will be given to the school district and it will be given to the public. And anyone, including representatives of the village, the district or any citizen, can appear at the IDA hearing and speak for or against the IDA assistance. If a project does get IDA assistance, the property will become exempt from property taxes for a period of years and the developer may also obtain relief from state sales taxes and from mortgage taxes. When it approves applications, the IDA usually requires that when the developer gets relief from taxes, the developer still has to pay a portion of the local property taxes to the local governments. And it provides for a phase out of that exemption, so the developer will pay a greater amount of those taxes each year until it reaches a hundred percent of the payment. That kind of agreement is called a payment law of taxes, commonly referred to as a pilot. The village does not control what the IDA does in this regard, either as the village taxes or school or town or county taxes. We don't control the amount of the pilot, we don't control whether there is a pilot and we don't control the duration of the pilot. The pilot, if approved by the IDA, applies to all levels of property taxes. The developer has offered as part of their application to make additional payments to the village voluntarily, so the village will be made whole against any loss of village tax revenues due to the pilot. The village could not require the developer to do this. The developers offered this voluntarily as part of the application. Similarly, the village cannot require the developer to make a similar offer with respect to the school, county or town taxes. Nor can the village refuse to approve the application because the developer won't voluntarily make such an offer. The developer has not made such an offer today. The village has to make its decision on the facts, not on speculation, rumor or conjecture. The village also is subject to various legal constraints as to whether it can deny an application or whether it can impose certain conditions if it approves an application. The mayor's outlined for you the rules of discussion. The board looks forward to hearing your comments and questions as to the proposed zoning law amendment and the proposed development, including any comments you may have as to reasonable conditions that you think should be considered by the board to mitigate any impacts of the development. So all that being said, Mayor, uh, we can move on at this point to the public. So all that being said, Mayor, we can move on at this point to the public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Leavitt. Commentary from the board? Okay, we could get started. One would like to stand up, make a comment, introduce yourself, tell us where you live. Yes, ma'am? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, you know, I'm sorry, I forgot. We were going to have the developer representatives give a presentation.
Your call, Mayor, would you like us to go first?
Yes, that'd be great, makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Walsh here, 229 Seventh Street, Garden City, New York, for the applicant. And I wonder if I could, Mayor, if you could indulge something off the topic for a moment, concerns Bob Conham. I have served as an applicant's attorney for the village in many, many zoning cases for many, many years, and I think of the loss of his retirement. He was a tremendously gifted zoning board leader, and he's going to be thoroughly missed. He will always be remembered, but he'd be thoroughly missed, and I'd like to have an opportunity, because we're in a public forum, to make sure that's on the record.
Thank you.
If I could, there's some new folks here, I'm sure, and I want to go over a couple of things that I've read, and a couple of things that I've discussed, and I've heard misstatements about. But first, I wanted to confirm a couple of things that are in the record to make sure that, from the applicant's point of view, the record is complete. I wanted to confirm that the Nassau County Planning Commission recommendation, I hear Mr. Levin tell us that it is, it's a local determination. I wanted to confirm that the village has received a fire marshal approval for the site, the site plan, if it was submitted. I wanted to confirm also, which I believe must be the case if you're ready to make a secret determination, that the village planners, H2M, have presented the village with their analysis that the village is in a position, having taken a hard look on the project, which is a requirement under SECRE. I'd also then like to dispel a few notions about the project that I've heard, and I've said I've read about. First, the first notion is the village has not, this project has not been studied by experts of the village. A number of people have come up and said, see, you're relying on the applicant's experts, that is not the case. The village has a full team of experts that they've used, from traffic to all environmental issues that they've been using, and these folks, I may have been sitting in the row with them, but they are strictly to protect the village and to guide you and your decision-making on this application. Second one is that the project will not generate significant tax dollars to the village. And I think that this is one of the things that gives, that's been given a lot of, a lot of input from a lot of people around, claiming that somehow we are not paying taxes on this property. And I've heard it, I've said it in front of you, we're not paying our fair share. But let me, so what I did was, I said, let's take a look at taxes, because even though everyone is correct up there that says this is an application as it relates to taxes before the IDA board, and this board doesn't have jurisdiction over, it is important to us, and it's important I know to you, that people, and hopefully people in the room, have an understanding of what the true tax picture will be with this project. So I put together a little sketch, or a little drawing, or a little chart, to hopefully give people in the room a better understanding of how I see taxes, how I expect taxes to play out for this property. And this is even getting an IDA. So let's just wait for that to come up.
You could. Cam, do you have any pictures of the building at some point?
Oh, well, I didn't know whether I was going from people's names, so we do, we have the whole file here. So you wanted to start with that? Put a chart up here to go over.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we will, okay, we will, because we're going to get into the height issue. So there was a, so there was a letter that the mayor received from the school district, who I have appeared before, who I've spoken with, the attorney for the school district. The letter was dated May twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, and it indicated a number of things, and a couple of them, I felt, were just bordered on being disingenuous. And the first one was that the school board, we anticipate that any IDA-approved pilot payment in lieu of taxes will shift the tax burden of five-five-five on that development to the homeowners for the benefit of the development. So I wanted everyone to see this chart, and if I could, I got this down here. This is a chart, and what I did was, I'm comparing in this chart, twenty-five single homes with a hundred and fifty unit, multiple dwelling unit. The twenty-eight single homes are really the prior project. We've been here before, where a number of people have said, what about the residential townhouse project of more than ten years ago? Why, why are we abandoning that? Well, I had indicated, and the client has indicated, that that plan will not be a successful plan, given the nature of the economic conditions and what is selling in the market. But if we did have that plan for the purpose of taxes, you'd see the following. You'd see twenty-five units that have been previously approved by the board, we would be entitled to three units of affordable sold units, and they would be of the nature of attached, single-family dwellings. They could have three or four bedrooms, but I did the analysis with four bedrooms, because there is not a mandate on the size of the number of bedrooms in those houses, and twenty-five of them would be market-driven, and three of them would be affordable, based upon the village's affordable housing statute. If you take taxes down, what the village might expect upon assessment of those initially, you would get six thousand dollars, roughly six thousand dollars, on village tax per unit, you'd get about eight thousand on school tax, I did not do the general tax, because it applies, general tax is the lowest tax, it doesn't benefit the residents of this village, and I'm trying to do this from the perspective of what benefits the residents of the village. So if you added the village tax down, and times the twenty-eight units, you get revenue to the village of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on the village tax revenue, and you would get school tax revenue of eight thousand times the twenty-eight, two hundred and twenty-four thousand. For total, village tax residents would get the benefit of three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars of revenue on day one, and it may be a few thousand up or down on that, but it's certainly a close analysis or a close look. And that would stop there. Then you'd get people challenging taxes as they do in the village, and then you'd get people with tax increases as a result of the nature of the school districts and the village tax budget, and, but you'd basically be left with that benefit. If you take the hundred now, that's measured against the hundred and fifty units. Here's what we do know in the hundred and fifty units. We submitted tax information from a tax attorney indicating that on day one, the village tax would be on the project, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year beginning at day one. We have offered, as Mr. Levin indicated, and we have always offered this, we plan on paying our full village tax, and that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars then would be paid on day one, and it would never stop being paid, and it would go up based upon village taxes going out. We also know that this property has currently an existing school tax of eighty-nine thousand dollars. When this project gets built, which wouldn't be, if it were approved for two, two years, it would probably get operational because of the nature of things, maybe one and a half to two years, that number will be higher, but I use the conservative number, because it's eighty-nine thousand right now, in school taxes on this property. The total of the village tax that we committed to paying, and the school tax, which we have to pay, which isn't changing, is three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars on this same site. These numbers are guaranteed, it may be a little higher if that number's up by the time we start, but these are guaranteed to the village all the time. So they are short of the three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars that you could count on from the dwellings, the single-family dwellings, but it's still three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, and we haven't even gotten to the pilot. I am not here to negotiate the pilot, pilot will be negotiated with the IDA, the school district will know of it, I've talked to their council, I will make sure he's aware of when the hearings are, and I don't have a problem with discussing this with them. But the pilot, in a standard pilot, you do them in many ways, but if we took what our tax attorneys have given the village to be an additional nine hundred thousand in school tax, when the building gets fully assessed, and you have a twenty-year pilot, your pilot payments on school would be roughly a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars each year. So the total taxes to the village residents in year one with the pilot would be eighty-nine thousand, forty-five thousand, and two hundred and fifty thousand, which is also three hundred and eighty-four thousand. This amount, based upon this conservative analysis for pilot, would increase forty-five thousand dollars each year, so that in year two, this project would yield four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in taxes, in year three, four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in taxes. It would greatly exceed what the village could hope to get out of this project here, and the benefits then are long-term, and they continue to go, they just continue to rise, and you would never, we start with this number here, you'd never be lower than that. So to suggest that there are no taxes associated with this, or that someone else is going to pick up our taxes, is a misnumber, it's not an accurate statement. You may not like the project, you may think that the village's people should pay no pilot, that's fine, that's a position, but you cannot say, we will not be paying taxes. Can I answer with a second slide? Taxes should be viewed in the context also of the number of school children. That's the second component of this that we've been dealing with for, since day one on this project. I've done the similar thing, analysis with the school children, and I have the twenty-five plus the three, I have twenty-eight single-family homes, and I, as I said, would be three or four bedrooms. There are a number of studies out there, which talk about how many students you can expect from a project, and they range from a little under one to one to one point one two for single-family dwellings with this number of bedrooms. So in this single-family home, each of them, let's argue, or let's discuss, you would maybe get thirty to thirty-two students coming out of that project. Look down any street in the village, you get, you have children in any of the homes. Twenty-five of them would be market, three of them would be affordable, but you would have somewhere between twenty-eight to thirty-two students, based on anyone's analysis of it. If you take the hundred and fifty units, you have an H2M, your report-
Please, if we could refrain from kind of doing-
And a VHB, which is our planner's report, both of them analyzed student database on the Rutgers study, and the New York component of the Rutgers study, and they estimated that the hundred and fifty units will have twenty-seven to thirty-seven students could be expected from that development. Now, that may be a little wrong, I know, someone's going to say, I said when I first came in, seventeen at one point in time, that I thought seventeen, somebody asked me how many students do I think are going to come from this project, and I might have said seventeen somewhere about that. But here's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at the fact that in this village, we don't have that many students coming from any of the multiple dwelling units. All of a sudden, we're going to build one, and all of a sudden, we're going to be, have an influx of students with it. It's just not, it's just not based on the numbers, and it's not the experience that this village has with multiple dwelling units. As an example, and I know I've quoted this before, this is Mineola, a lot of people don't want me to talk about Mineola. Mineola has three hundred rental apartments, multiple dwelling, in a high-end building, similar to this, with affordable component, they have six students. They've had a maximum of nine in their first two years at one point in time, they've had a low of about three or four, but they know how many students they have, and it's six. We know the data, who has the data on school? We'd all love to know what it is. The letter from the school district to you said, can you give us your projections on how many students are coming from this site? Well, who's the best group, who knows how many students come from multiple dwelling schools? The school district, they have that data. I indicated when I spoke for the school board, I said, if there were bad data here as to students coming from multiple dwelling units, you would be front and center giving it to me. They never did, because they know, as we all know here, I think in the room, that very few people in this village come from multiple dwelling units. You can say this is a different one if you want, but be careful, because it's not. It's a high-end, multiple dwelling unit, it's going to be first-rate, and it's not, it's going to be a fabulous building. So we don't think there's going to be a lot of students coming from the building. In summary on these two issues, because I think they're critical to the village, and I think it's critical to the residents here, and I understand, and I live in the village, I understand the concern here. Long before this project hit the drawing board, well more than a year ago, I've been advocating, and I continue to advocate for my village and for other villages that I represent, that we can no longer shoulder tax burden for schools on single-family residences. It's a, the end game is terrible. Can you go back to the tax, the headlines for the tax? And here's why, and here's how it doesn't work. If you look, if you, if you look at this here, you have eight thousand, you have two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in school revenue, okay? If, and I'm going to use a conservative number, if it costs twenty-two thousand dollars to educate a student, and you have twenty, you have thirty students who are coming from this, that's six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It's a dead-end game to think that you pay for your school district for single-family residences, the taxes that you're generating, yet people are fighting for that, rather than fighting for something. So that's six hundred and sixty thousand dollars is going to cost, two hundred and twenty-four is what you're going to get, you're going to lose money every year on that proposition. Municipalities, particularly villages, have to be long, long-term on their thinking of raising money. A project like this will generate many more dollars over the life of it, you'll get to six hundred and sixty thousand, the break-even point on those students, you'll get to it before half the pilot is over, and from then on, it's a cash flow positive, it's actually helping support and keep tax dollars down for the other residents of the village. This has been proven and shown in every case, the numbers in this case do not lie, they may be fractionally going either way, but it's no, there is no dispute, that is a strong indicator that these types of developments generate taxes. And you know, because you know we can't, you can't pay your school taxes and pay for three or four kids in school there, it just doesn't work. So I think that we have to take them in a long-term plan as a municipality, and I've been advocating this, and say, in order to keep our real estate taxes down, we need to have these types of developments. The hotel is another one. You had a hotel with a pilot, it's a guy with a pilot, nobody's, nobody was up there complaining about that pilot, it was a great move for this village. Why? Because in a few years, they will begin generating significant tax dollars, and they will ultimately help take tax burden off the residents. And this is the only way it can happen, it cannot happen by continuing to drive up taxes for the people that live in residences, you need other forms of increase. So I know, I know, everybody would love to say, it's not your fair share. The tax policy is always based upon policy arguments. We have senior reductions and senior exemptions or partial exemptions, because we want to favor that and keep seniors around. We have churches, and we don't charge taxes for a different reason. So to say they're not paying their fair share, no one says that. So we have this negative aspect of pilots on these types of dwellings, but in reality, they've become cash cows, and if they're run very well, they end up actually, looking back in a few years, you say, thank God we did that plan, thank God we don't have to just keep raising our real estate taxes on the single-family residents we have. So those are the two main things on that. Traffic was the third one that we've heard a lot about in these hearings. We have studied traffic. Stewart Avenue, the traffic on Stewart Avenue is not our traffic, everybody knows, the residents here is familiar, or more so than I am, it is not our traffic, it is traffic from outside of the village. That is not going to change. So when people come in and say, when we say, the studies all show, and the data all shows that there's not going to be a significant change in the level of service as it relates to traffic, that is true, it's totally true, because it's negligible in already a tough environment, but that isn't going to change. The solution to that isn't to say, okay, you know what, because town and hemisphere is building up and using our roads and dropping through our buildings, let's not build anything, let's keep our property as vacant and unused as possible, keeping our taxes down as low as we can, and not take advantage of the tremendous assets we have here. Why? So we can get, let other people put more cars in front of our roads and our streets. The issue of traffic has to be dealt with in an overall view of road change conceivably, or not. If people's attitude is, you know, people talk about, a woman was up here last time I was here, and she was saying, this development, no one's going to go, it's just in a bad spot, no one would come out and then go to the stores or anything like that. It is bad at certain hours. The reason, the reason a development like this is better is, you know, people go out all different hours of the day, all different hours of the week. A commercial office building, which this property was zoned for, and which could, if it was zoned back to a C3, would support a seventy-five thousand square foot office building, and then the traffic would be very, very difficult. So much more so, and the numbers show it. So I can put Rebecca Goldberg up to testify to this again, she has given him the data, it is all in the record. This, we always talk in terms of what's the best use, considering everything. You can't isolate and say one thing is good about it, one thing's bad about it, because everybody can find something that they can fix on that's not good about it. But when you put the totality of all the issues together, all the impacts, this is a positive plan for the village, and it will be, when it, if you pass this, you will be very thankful you did when it gets built. I have a real strong feeling of that, we won't be around, we'll see, some people may say no, but that's my feeling on it. So I'm not going to put the traffic expert up unless we have some questions about it. And that's my closing remarks.
No, I think you can move on to next stage, pictures, which would be-
Okay, can we- Okay, can we, do we really need to see pictures? So that's the front elevation. The elevation that would be, if I were the backyard of Raymond Court, that on an angle, that's what I would be looking at. The building is designed to be stepped back. The concept here was to remove the height of the building from the folks living on Raymond Court as far back as we could. So the two wings start at two stories, they progress back to three stories, and then the last back end that will be running right along the road.
Kevin, Mike, what's that?
Oh, I'm sorry. The, this is now a different elevation, but you can see the step up. So the first, the two lanes there are the two heights, they're two-story. Then it would be stepped back to three-story, and then the final, in the rear, running along the road, the entranceway to Rizvel Field, would be the four stories. If you can just bring the elevation up for the fronting of that one, okay? So just hold that for one second. If you see, the parking would be below grade, so there would be some surface parking, but very little, in an effort to keep the vehicles from making the place not look as good as it will look with fully landscaped. At the Port Crochere, which is that front entranceway, above that, you'll see the green mansaw roof. That is really the health fitness center in the building. It's 4,700 square feet. That is the issue that Mr. Levin mentioned, that the current code section that you have drafted would not permit that. I don't believe the interpretation would permit that. We have asked, because we meet in all other criteria. We didn't build a block building, we could put it on a wing, and I'm going to show you a picture of it on the wing, which I think would not serve any purpose here. Where it is right now, it actually blocks, it architecturally balances the building. It blocks the wires and the lines, the overhead lines, from the people in Raymond Court, more so than if you take it down. And it certainly would seem to serve no purpose. If you put that on one of the wings, which can be done, which Brian is going to show us, why would it on a wing here? We're going to ask that you reject this, because it doesn't make any sense. It's still zoning, it's still code compliant. This, this would comply with your proposed law as drafted, the one you're going to see now. And actually, it's not done in a way that would overstate it, it's actually smaller. That would be the, the, we would just be putting it on a wing, and that's not the, that's not the way this should be done. This building was studied, never, without that fitness center at the top. It went through committee. I thought that everyone in the committee loved it, I didn't hear any adverse positions from the board. So we're asking you, we presented this also, because this is zoning compliant also. We are hoping that you, in looking at this, say, "We don't like that, that doesn't make a lot of sense." If we're inclined to go, if you're inclined to go with the building, we'd rather you not do that. The other one, just so there's no precedential value to that fifth story, I did draft language. I sent it to Mr. Levin. I think I created language that would give you the ability to say, "Can't be used for living space, or can't be used for sleeping quarters," or anything like that. It could be limited to 10% of the surface area. So I think if you look at that, you can find a way, if you're inclined, you can find a way to allow them to keep that. I don't think it harms anyone. It's the last piece of property in the village, it is, and I would say, architecturally, it's pleasing. So, just because some people might be new here, this would be 115, 150 units here. 15 of them would be affordable. 115 of them would be two bedrooms, dominant use in most of these types of projects. There'd be 21 bedrooms and 15 three-bedrooms. These would be, the ones that are not affordable, would be market-driven, they would rent at significant dollars. In fact, these would rent, these would rent, the two bedrooms and three bedrooms, would be renting at market for a number that would allow you to buy a lot of houses and pay mortgage. Their rent is that significantly used. Why we say that people, empty nesters, want to leave, it's not so much, we, in this business, we've all seen that people, it used to be you could sell your house and then buy down, or rent down, and save a lot of money. Now it's much more, more of a lateral move as to the locate that. But if you do want to stay, a lot of people do want to stay in the village, and a lot of people end up wanting to rent, they want to stay near their families. So these are ideal for those, those folks. So it's not that this is going to be a building that's going to generate another argument, a lot of children, because the reality of it is, if I wanted a house, if I have a lot of children, I'll buy a house and I'll get to that.
Kevin, can I interrupt you for a second? Could you go through those numbers again? 115 two-bedroom?
Yes.
And 21-bedroom?
And 15-three?
And 15-three. Thank you.
So they are market-driven, it would be 24-hour doorman building, first-rate amenities, if we can keep the health club up there, or the fitness center. And that's, that's really the application. I can answer any further questions people have about it.
This would still go before ADRB?
I'm sorry.
It would still go to ADRB, but this is what you'd be presenting that?
Yeah, zoning-wise, the, in my opinion, I'll defer to Mr. Levin, but in my opinion, without that change, the ADRB wouldn't have the ability to give us that fitness center up there.
No, I'm sorry. The wolf itself?
It would still, yes, we're expecting to go to ADRB.
But just guys, do you know the mix of bedroom units for the affordable units?
Yes, they, by your law, and by general law in the Affordable Housing Department, I'll just explain this one, one time so everyone can know. There is, 10% of your units would have to be affordable housing. And out of that, you would create three pools, each one of them have five units in it. And you would have to basically put these units, affordable units, all through the building. They can't be just one area, they got to be dispersed in the building. The idea on this is, affordable housing should be the same as other housing. And it doesn't work if you try to change that. So they would be dispersed randomly, more or less, throughout the building. They would be same finishing amenities, same all that. The Affordable Housing Statute Garden City has, the people who could rent there, the first pool that has five of them in it, they would have to go, they would have to have income not to exceed 80% of the median income for the area. The second pool of five units would have to have median income not to exceed 60% of the area. And the third pool, five units, would have to be not to exceed 40%. That's the village's Affordable Housing Statute. To Mr. Levin, to answer that question further, the number of units which would be in each one would be based on proportion. So, most of the affordables would be two-bedroom, two-bedroom, and most of the, and less of them, one may be a three-bedroom, that would be just based on the calculation.
Thank you. Yes, sir, please, what, can you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Anthony Alpinta, I am the Fair Housing Compliance Officer that has been appointed by Federal Justice Judge Arthur Deesbatt regarding the litigation involving the village. My question to you is, could you explain differently? I didn't quite understand how the allocation of affordable housing applied to whether it's a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or three-bedroom unit? Or is it contingent upon the pool, and let the pool decide?
Okay, so, if you apply for an affordable housing unit, you would make an application. There'll be a lottery, then it's a fair, there'll be dates when you have to submit your application for it. Anyone who meets the criteria of income, median income, will be able to apply for that. The distribution of the threes, the twos, and the ones would be based on the number of units and the number of affordable. If there's 10% affordable housing in the building, then 10% of the three bedrooms would have to be an affordable housing unit. If there's 10% of the two bedrooms, also would have to be. So, 12 or so might be two bedrooms and two one-bedrooms, or two threes. That would have to be worked out. I, I'm reviewing the statute myself, and statute's not exactly clear how you break that potential deadlock between those percentages. The rental for the affordables, though, the village does also address that in their statute, in your statute, the rental must, cannot be more than a third of 30% of their income. So, there is not only a qualification for median income, there is a, we are required to charge rent that doesn't exceed 30%, I believe it is, of their income. So you can do the math, and you can figure out where it is. I will tell you, when we get to the IDA, right, if we get to the IDA, that's a factor for the IDA, that's the public policy behind a lot of this stuff. We are, we are, affordable units generally for developers, they don't make money, they lose money. That's their, that's their contribution. So the IDA factors that in, and a whole host of other things for that discussion.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I guess we'll move to public comment.
I have a question.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Will you let him?
No, I have a question for him.
I understand, he'll need to come in, just come on up and introduce himself, and then...
Mark Patito, Raymond Court. He was explaining a few meetings back, having tenants was better than ownership. I'd like him to explain that to me further. Because 28 units, 30 units, those were all owners, these are tenants. I'm not talking about affordable, yeah, I'm just talking about tenants in general. So I'd like to hear his answer to that.
I'm sorry, is the question with why is one better?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not saying one's necessarily better. I have never understood, and I understand it is a belief, I believe it's somewhat of a misconception, that in a well-run building, that is upscale, over-the-top quality, I've never understood how people would rather have a developer sell their units out, head to the hills, who knows what they left with. I would much rather want my developer to be invested in the community with his $60 million, or whatever it is, and to be a long-term player in the village. I just think that it's a no-brainer for me. I realize there's another attitude some people have on it. That's always been why I think it might be better, but that's just personal.
Yes, ma'am? Just remember, you want four minutes?
Yes, sir. Shout out to the Hunter Hill's Avenue. Your guess to it is interesting, who pays $8,000 in a house?
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Did you introduce yourself?
No, I just did. Your guess to it is very, very interesting, but unbelievable. Who pays $8,000 and goes to city on a house? I don't know anyone like that. Do you? And also, the tax law will say what I'm going to say, because I only have four minutes. I am here to request that the mayor and the Board of Trustees deny the request of the developer of 555 Stewart Avenue to allow them to build a complex consisting of 150 rental apartments. The original request was for 25 townhouses. If approved, the builder will definitely seek a 20-year pilot from the IDA, and we all know that the burden of the tax school taxes, which is quite significant, which they would be paying, not $334,000, will fall on the backs of the residents who are already very highly taxed, while the developer rakes in his rental fees on this huge project. The school board has already expressed concern about the IDA pilot for school taxes and the effect on their budgets via PIS. If approved, the schools will need to provide more classrooms, teachers, buses, et cetera, to absorb, and I'm not talking affordable housing, which is very minimal, to absorb their new students, which will be many due to the large number of apartments. Also, a traffic study was done, paid for by the developer, which I heard you were listening, which was totally inaccurate, as its only findings were moving the traffic light closer to the project and putting it a left-hand turn lane. We all know how Clark Stewart Avenue is, they have 343 projected spaces. They're going to have to come out of there. Also, as stated at the last meeting by a representative of the police department for fire and fire department, they said they were very concerned about the four stories to reach them, and the strain on the police and especially the fire department. The Nassau County Climate Planning Commission decided that they will let the Board of Trustees, they didn't make any decision, made this decision. So with all the above, and all the letters in the Garden City News, and the residents at the meetings who are against this huge project because of the burden it will put on us, I respectfully request that the mayor and the Board of Trustees think kindly of us residents and what you will be putting on us. You're here to protect us, you were elected to protect us. So I hope you will give kind consideration to this now.
I could just correct one statement. This is now, we referred to someone from the fire department. That per, excuse me, let me speak, I let you speak, okay? I asked, nobody interrupt, nobody speak over other people, thank you. That person was not represented over the fire department, he is a firefighter, one firefighter. The fire department of Garden City went through this building, went through the plans, worked with the developer to address any concerns. So there is no Garden City Fire Department opinion against this development, or any concerns of safety. Thank you. Somebody, I think she needs to please, nobody.
You have a wonderful job here tonight. My name is Craig Katinas, I live in Blue Bell Court with my wife and two kids. I applaud and commend the opportunity to do affordable housing for people. Everybody deserves an opportunity, and that's what we are about here in this town, building friendships and collaborations regardless of the economic spectrum. But the data, I will reiterate, I think was perhaps based on the numbers, based on a book from maybe 1932 in terms of your taxes, because according to the State Education Department in 2012, the average cost per student was $25,000 in Nassau County. That's 2012. I'm not going to even run rate it to today. So let's just go by your numbers of 27 to 37 families. That's going to cost us, just in taxes alone, for students, over 1 through 12, $11.1 million versus what we're seeing here is a pedantic number of, what, $400,000 a year? I'll run rate that up. Whatever it is, we are losing, and when I mean "we," that is Garden City. I think everyone deserves an opportunity to live in a beautiful community. That is absolutely not what we're discussing here. What we're discussing here is the fact that where are we going to get the monies to offset these massive losses? Because we're not talking pennies, we're talking millions of dollars. Is it going to come from increased taxes? I don't know, Thomas said, "I think you find it funny with that question, with that smile," but I don't find it funny. I don't think anybody in this community finds it funny. I think this is probably the youngest town hall meeting you've had, because of all the families with kids here that are concerned with this. So with that, I'm just curious about, I have my four minutes, he had 15 on his four. So in terms of that, I'm curious about how we're going to actually cover and address those costs in the long term. Because when you're dealing with tenants and all these other factors, you can keep on spilling in and out, over and over and over. They're not replenishing the returns that we're going to have to offset. And we're not even talking about the critical masses that we're going to have to invest in the other infrastructure in terms of the civil components, fire, sanitation, law. Have we even done a study on that part, and what that impact will be? I'm just curious. So in terms of that, we're talking about a fraction of the actual cost to this community. And what we're asking you to do is really think long and hard about what those decisions are in the long term. And as someone that's lived here for 10 years, I can just let you know, I've never received that booklet. And to know that it was just updated in 35 years, and you're only going to give it to new homeowners, just to let you know from any homeowner that has been here less than 35 years, we would appreciate the new numbers, the new data, for all of us. So maybe a postcard or something to all of us, to be aware that this information is on the website. Because quite frankly, a lot of the data that is being presented here that is on your website has never been presented and articulated to all of us to be a conscientious consumer, to understand all the facts at hand, rather than just one form like this. So, communication, like in a household, right? If I don't talk to my wife, I'm in trouble. Well, I think where, that's where we are today.
Well, thank you for coming, I guess, for the evening, if you've ever come to, right?
Yeah, 10 years.
Thank you. Just in terms of the handbook, we put out notice in the paper and in our columns that it's available and on the website, and we put it on the website, obviously, but...
I don't even know the website.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Just, so you have two children... Just, so you have two children, I know a lot of people in the room, I recognize a lot of faces, there are a lot of people with kids in the school system. I also grew up here. I knew two people total, my whole life, who went to school at Garden City, who came, emanated from an apartment building in town. I think it's like twelve-hundred units in town, something like that?
About a little over a thousand.
So, the point is, I know we're quoting, we're talking about these numbers of students, like there's gonna be hundreds of students.
I didn't, I actually used his numbers. So let's be very clear. I used his runway.
Excuse me, I'm just talking, we're neighbors. This is a happy place. We're not killing diseases.
I'm not true about that.
That's your, you know, you live your life. What I'm asking is, you know, I have four children, I have a daughter in Locust, I have a son in Stewart, I have a son in the middle school, I have a son in high school. Total, total. Any of their friendships, they're very social kids, play sports, they do their thing. Two, two friends, two friends drop off at an apartment building in town. So just, you know, again, I feel like we should just temper the expectation of blowing the facts up and expanding the mark. Excuse me. They are not facts, or you just get up and say, "There's gonna be hundreds of kids," and it's fifteen million dollars of this, and then the... We saw some numbers that I'm assuming, you know, took some time to put together, and there's studies from universities and this and that, but then I also know the practical application of growing up here and having a family here is not anywhere close to, I've never even known ten people come from apartments in town, children at the school. So, again, just trying to get a sense of where everyone's at.
I'm a little jaded.
Excuse me, excuse me. If I could, I'm just trying to understand your comments. A challenge. I'm just talking, are you against apartment buildings? What is it that you're against? Are you all in on the economics of an IDA?
Absolutely, I'm absolutely against the way that this platform is saying that this is going to be a money-revenue component that's going to enhance the lives, the community. I think it's actually a need to deter. So that's, so I just want to make some clarity here, because I didn't say hundreds. I actually used his data. So it was thirty-seven, thirty-seven. So to be clear, not hundreds, thirty-seven.
But again, I should make sure, but that's...
But thirty-seven costing us eleven-point-one million dollars.
That's if there's an IDA granted, which they're doing on their own. Because that against apartment buildings, against the economics.
I'm asking how Garden City is preparing for the long-term demand of offsetting those costs to address a conservative number they provided us of eleven-point-one million based on a static number from New York State in 2012, which is in the Garden City patch, which you can find online.
How is it going to be, you have nine dollars?
What's that? Do the numbers of one through twelve, times thirty-seven, times that by twenty-five thousand dollars, the average cost in Nassau County in 2012. That's eleven-point-one million.
So you got thirty-seven times twenty-five thousand?
Twelve years of education.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Twelve years of education for thirty-seven.
If you're going to be nasty, please. I'm just asking for help to understand, excuse me, excuse me. Nasty, I said we're trying to understand the comment. He insulted somebody else, okay? That's what I'm asking, just understand the comment.
So first, I apologize. So when you take thirty-seven and you times that one through twelve, okay, twenty-five thousand dollars a year on the Nassau County average from 2012, which I'm sure is much higher today based on the New York State, New York State data, which is found online in the Garden City patch, which I did right here. That's eleven-point-one million dollars. When you look at the data they just provided us, that is absolutely not going to address those costs for those thirty-seven family alone, thirty-seven children, let's just say, alone. So let's even go further. You didn't even take into account the other socioeconomic costs for sanitation, for fire, or for police that we would need to address with that as well.
Sir, if I can ask you a question. I'm in the brokerage business, I work with numbers all the time. So let me just, let's just stay with numbers. So you basically said thirty-seven kids, twenty-five thousand dollars a year, that's how you get to eleven million?
One, going through, one through twelve.
Okay, well, no, one through twelve, so I understand that. So basically, that's how you get to eleven million. What you're saying is, this is what the cost is gonna be to us?
Just on, just on, that is the, that is the very low cost because that's twenty-twelve.
No, no, I understand, I'm just, I'm just saying, this is what you're projecting. Okay, so, wait, wait. What I'm just saying to you is, and I'm just saying the number's gonna be different because in that twelve-year span of time, they are gonna be paying a pilot, which will be gradually increasing over the time. Now, we don't know if that pilot, no, we just think, we don't know if the pilot will be twenty years or if the pilot will be ten years. But even if it's twenty years, what happens is, the total amount of eleven million dollars that you're saying is our tax bill is not the true tax bill because even if they got a twenty-year pilot and it increased five percent every single year, based upon nine-hundred thousand, that's an additional forty-five thousand, what ends up happening is, over the twelve years, your eleven thousand, I don't know the time to do the math, is gonna be significantly less than eleven thousand. So I'm just saying to you, rather than, rather than just sitting there throwing out an eleven, eleven million, rather than just throwing out an eleven million number, I think what would make sense is sit there and say, okay, if it was nine-hundred thousand and they started at ten percent, and then what was the payments that they made over the twelve years? When you subtract one from the other, then that's what the difference is. It's not eleven-point-two million. That's all I'm just saying.
Sir, I can appreciate that, but I was giving you one optic of a piece of data.
No, 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 I'm saying, I just wanted to clarify that, I'm saying, it's not eleven-point-two million.
What I'm more concerned about is that...
I just wanna jump in here.
I'm sorry.
I just wanna jump in here.
So if I don't have a mic, then you can cut me off. Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that. So all I'm asking to the point is, we're all focused here on the educational component, and I'm asking you to get a three-sixty analysis in terms of the other civil components that are going to be a cost to the community, police, fire, sanitation, are just three on it.
We have no increase because of police, because of this. We have no increase because of fire, because of this. Zero. And they're paying twenty-fourty thousand dollars to the village. We're not hiring more firefighters because of this building. We're not hiring more police because of this building.
I am new to the board, I too grew up here. I have an extensive volunteer service to this community. So I appreciate what you're saying. It is the school board's job, I'm not presuming to speak for them, but I do have a background there. It is the school board's job to plan and for the expansion or the contraction what the services are for the children. That is a constant, ongoing battle that they deal with every meeting. So, Mr. Walsh, when did you meet the school board?
I think in November of 2017.
Okay, so well in, when they started their budget process. Have you had an ongoing dialogue with the school board?
Other than to ask me to, would I give them notice, their council, through the notice of any IDA proceeding, and I said, "Certainly."
Aside from this project, school boards initiate demographic studies on a regular basis to plan the expansion and contraction of everywhere in this village. I am aware of at least three in the last twenty-five years. So they use those tools for that planning purpose and for that budget purpose. So getting to the fire and the police. We have an arrangement that that's going to be, our taxes are gonna be fully paid? And our taxes cover fire and police? Is that correct?
Yes.
So that's covered. I'm not saying that I'm for or against a pilot, I have my own opinion on that. I have my own personal opinion on what pilots mean for this community. But the fact that a developer can legally seek that, that they're entitled to do that, that's beyond our control. So anywhere in this village, there can be an expansion and contraction of children, not just in this one location, that the school board needs to address on a regular basis. And within that population, they need to address special ed needs, sporting needs, science needs, et cetera. That's their job.
Yes.
The village is going to be made whole for the fire, police part of that issue. We are listening tonight, I'm hearing residents' concerns on all the other issues of taxes, height, the actual appearance of the building, which is the purpose of this meeting.
Thank you. Next? Yes, sir? Okay, just tell us your name.
This is Ming from two-two-five Goring Road.
I'm sorry, say it, move forward.
Okay, so this is Ming from two-two-five Goring Road. May you just bring back to the table you just showed, so that I can look at that table. And I hope this now comes in the four minutes. What it takes three minutes to bring up?
And you only got a minute?
Then maybe I should turn it off, I can speak really fast. And you need a translator?
Go ahead.
Okay, so you look at this table, right? If I ask you, say, "I'm going to bone a hole in your budget, I can pay you one-hundred thousand dollars or two-hundred thousand dollars, which one you pick?" At the end of the day, it's a hole, right? So it's really done, no matter which one I want to choose. I can choose, say, "I don't want you to bone the hole in my budget," right? So this data is really misleading, and why is this data misleading, right? If you look at, again, here we see, based on the school tax, and everybody is talking about the report, the report is very, like, everybody references that, but there is also a statement in the report. Let me, I want to play, like, speed up, right? So first, the twenty-seven number is a conclusion based on a data in New Jersey. I don't know where I live now, I'm a little bit confused. Why don't you bring a number that is based on Alaska or, I don't know where, right? Again, second is, the thirty-sixth number is based on the New York State. Remember, we have different population density in the whole state. Okay, now I'll come to this report. The report said, "Residential demographic multiplier contained in this document provides important statewide average benchmark data that can only go so far in actively predicting the actual impact of housing development in a specific community. For instance, a given community may attract more or fewer public school students per housing unit because of such difference as geographic. For example, housing in New Jersey along the Hudson River may attract Manhattan-oriented households with few children, and the quality of the local school district household leads to that households with more children may disproportionately self-select to live in communities with high-quality school system." And if we look at the data, again, data, US News just published Garden City High School ranking to be the top-twenty school in the whole New York State. And somebody mentioned, the second page of that table said, "Minionna." Could you check what's the ranking of Minionna? Right? So, if we look at that, same report they used for the study says that people may disproportionately self-select to live in a community with a high-quality school with more kids, right? Again, if we want data, I can say that Garden City now have eight thousand households and near four thousand students. If we take that data, that means forty percent, right? Now we are adding one-hundred-and-thirty apartments with two-bedroom or more, and we are talking about how many? Sixty-five, right? And based on data with, what our friend just said, in 2012, we are talking about twenty-two thousand. And we, I just saw the data yesterday, it's much higher now, right? At least twenty percent more. So if we see sixty-five students there, and each one need almost twenty-two thousand or three, thirty, uh, three-thirty, uh, thirty thousand dollars a year, that's a much bigger hole that one can cover. And I don't want to make the choice, option one or option two. I want to reject both. Thank you.
Again, what you were talking about here is the number of students expected. And you were talking about data, but I have a problem with how you made the cross setting. I think a better way to do it is not total housing in Garden City and how many students we have as a result of that housing, but how many apartments we have in town, and proportionally how many students come from the apartment pool we have. If there's a certain percentage, I think it would be smart to then expect that number. So do we have, do we know what that number is? As a little... Again, it's a little difficult to say, oh, you know what I'm saying?
I want to address this number, right? The things I really don't like is if you look at a second page, right? Why the data say, "Oh, we only have sixty on Minionna," right? If, in a negotiation, I think people here, we know, right, that's a low ball. You just put an enterprise in your mind, say, "Oh, there is a number really, really low, like, maybe I can go a little bit higher." So that's why I gave a high-ballot number, sixty-five. Please address that number.
Sorry, and I am addressing the number, and that, and the low number, in terms of, to get the actual number, we don't have to go to New York, though, we don't have to go to New York City, we don't have to go anywhere. We have a good cross section, I'm sure we have the data of students who emanate from apartments in town. We have over a thousand units in town. So in other words, I'm sure we get closer to that number. Excuse me, I don't like people speaking before you speak today. Yes, sir? Go ahead, your turn.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Luca Santos. I'm the Long Island Director of New York Communities for Change. And I'm here to talk on behalf of this development, mostly because it will allow Garden City to join the 21st century and stop being the most racist village.
Excuse me, no commentary, so none. Excuse me.
You don't even know us.
Excuse me.
I want to read, I just want to remind everyone of the context, and I'm just gonna...
Excuse me, one more out first, and you will be removed.
I'm very briefly...
That's my rule, that's the rule. Thank you.
I'm very briefly gonna read just from a September twenty-six, 2017 newsday article. I won't use my, I won't use all my four minutes. So it says, "A federal judge has upheld the ruling against the village of Garden City that found the village's zoning of property was discriminatory because it was aimed at lacking affordable housing, adversely affecting minorities." US District Court Judge Arthur Stat centralized the rule September nineteen, following a second US Circuit Court of Appeals decision last year. The appeals court had affirmed that the village's decision to pursue single-family townhouses over multifamily housing on a twenty-five-acre parcel of public land was discriminatory and shape a racially influenced opposition. So it's not me, it's actually a district court and a federal court saying this. Stat, Judge Stat, said in his ruling that the village could have pursued a less discriminatory zoning classification. The judge said, "The zone largely eliminated the potential for the type of housing that minorities were disproportionately likely to need, namely affordable rental units." The court finds that minorities bore the brunt of the negative impacts of the zone. And again, I just want to read a quote from Merrick Crossen, who happens to be here, who's the Chair of the Long Island Chapter of New York Communities for Change. "We have invited segregation in Garden City for an awful long time. We are happy that the court has reported our struggle against segregation in Garden City and on Long Island. This is another step forward, and we are hopeful that Garden City will one day welcome African-American neighbors." So I want to encourage the board to pursue, the trustees to pursue this development. Fifteen units of affordable housing will go a long way to desegregating Nassau County, Garden City, Long Island. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, excuse me. I ask you not to talk while other people are speaking. If you can't help yourself, leave or you'll be removed. It's a very simple rule. People who haven't spoke yet, go first. Thank you. Mike Deonka from two-hundred Sackville Road. I don't think anybody's outright refusing any apartment complex, and I think it's a little unfair to call us racist, but be that as it may. Really briefly, Mr. Walsh, did you have a meeting with the school board before Governor Cuomo had published his most recent budget?
Well, it was November of seventeen, I'm not sure when, but...
Okay, because if the data was correct at our last proper youth association meeting, our school did...
our school district lost a considerable amount of money, and believe it exceeded a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. My second point would be when we're comparing it to the existing apartment complexes and the apartments that are present, you're talking perhaps about, in certain respects, apples and oranges. A lot of the units that are present now appear to be co-ops and, and units that are purchased as opposed to rentals, so it may sway the data.
Thank you.
Thank you. This, this name here?
Ah, good evening.
I'm sorry?
I'm Fran Costa. I've lived here in the village many, many years, too many, and I represent the many older people who live here in the village, who own homes, we pay our school taxes, we get nothing in return. We own the homes, but we pay our school taxes. We don't even get a school calendar. And I think there are so many...
I just have to interrupt you for one second. My wife, as we drive by, the school says to her trustee, "Why don't I even get a school calendar?" I'm sorry, she would be proud of me right now to comment, but I just sort of agree.
I thought, I've asked for a check-off when I pay my taxes, whether I would like a calendar or not. And I think it's a reasonable request, but so far, I don't get a calendar.
You should go to the school board and tell them that.
I have, and I only came tonight because I noticed in the paper that the school board itself was very questionable about what's going on. And as a longtime resident, this developer, ten years ago, got an exception so that it could be ruled from a commercial property to build homes on. He had the permit, it's over ten years, he has taken no action at all. Twenty-five years ago, I applied for a permit for an extension on my home. At first, I was denied the permit because it was two inches too far from the line that I was allowed, because I was only allowed at the time twenty-six point seven or twenty-seven. I don't recall the exact number. But they made us redraw all the plans, change the extension to a course to myself, and I acted on the permit and had the extension done. He had more than ten years to build on this property. He still has the permit, he can build the twenty-five units. If he can't make enough money, that's not our problem. You don't care whether I can pay my taxes or not. So I'm gonna convert my house to an apartment house. I'm gonna rent down the roads and bring in income. I only say this because many of the people here have that feeling, that we know that this has happened. Those apartment houses that were built in Mineola are really for the dicks, the double-income, no kids. They get on Long Island Railroad, or they work right there at Winthrop. The comparison is not accurate, so please keep that in mind. We're not objecting to houses being built. We're objecting to the size. A hundred and fifty families are a hundred and fifty families. That's three hundred cars, easily. That's three hundred cars. So I'm being realistic, that this is a consideration. And as the Board of Trustees, you should consider that if the members are not happy with the size of this development, then perhaps a reduction in the size would be a compromise that would make everyone happy. And I think you should keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Please step on up.
Me?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. I'm Betsy Andromidas. I am a lifelong resident. As you know, I grew up on Willow Street. Oh, sorry. Betsy Andromidas, life, lived here fifty-five years, fifty-five. I grew up on Willow Street, I lived on Kingsbury Road, and I now live on New Market. I took great offense to the young man who said we were a bunch of racists. I have forty-nine members of my husband's...
He didn't say.
Okay.
He did say, "Excuse me, right." A federal court judge said we're racist.
Okay, but let me say this.
As you like that or not, a federal court judge found that the village of Garden City is racist.
Okay, don't count this in my four minutes. Okay, but here's the thing. My husband is first generation, he didn't speak English till he was nine years old. He, I have a family that's blended. We have African-Americans, a lot of Hispanic people in our family, and mostly Europeans, and a lot of them don't read or write English. So I speak from a wide variety of people. The thing is, my husband's a real estate developer, and he owns a lot of real estate. And he owns real estate in Hempstead, Uniondale, and all over Nassau County. He has two buildings that are less than a mile from right here where we're standing. There's a hundred and eighty units. They're one-to-two-bedroom units, and there are two, he ran to his office to double-check the numbers. There are two and three kids living per unit. He said there, there are about four hundred and fifty kids, school-age kids, in his building. He has a truancy officer, he has a big program getting the kids educated, getting them to school. I volunteered there, my daughter has volunteered there. He said, "It's a joke to think there's thirty-two to thirty-seven kids coming in here, because what is the rent roll gonna be? What is the cost?" I called a few friends, I came to the meeting, I haven't been in a while, I'm taking care of elderly parents, but what is the cost of the apartments that are coming in here? Because everything that we've talked about in our own family was like, "Well, they're one-to-two bedrooms, they're not gonna be that bad." And then I hear about three bedrooms and four bedrooms, and I look at Kathy Wood right there, sorry to single you out, who has a four-bedroom house, and how many kids do you have, Kathy?
Five.
Five kids. So what I'm saying is, what is the rent roll gonna be? I called several friends that live in set apartments in town, and they're paying thirty-five hundred, thirty-one hundred. Claudia Galvin, a Realtor in town, is paying thirty-two hundred a month for a one-bedroom. So I want to know, what is gonna be the cost of these? And wait, I have more questions, I'm just trying to get them all in in my four minutes. I have so many notes, and I apologize. When we were fighting Avalon Bay, which was a win for the village, some people might not think that, I think it was a win, we found out in our research that when you have a building built on a county road, and Stewart Avenue is a county road, and I'm not sure about the Ring Road, if that counts. However, we found out that you can build a building twenty percent larger, by state law, not by the village law, you can build a building twenty percent larger than it, than the proposed building. So a hundred and fifty units could grow a lot bigger. And I'm wondering, this, I know the property. My dad was an advertising guy, we used to park there and go to New York City.
Betsy, I'm gonna interrupt you, because it's a hundred and fifty units.
I know, and it could be more.
No, it can't.
How could it not be, though? Because we did turn that.
It cannot. It cannot.
Okay. Second thing, I, I will hold you to that, trust me.
Thank you.
Um, the other thing is this, the pilot program, we all know they're going for an IDA. If I was building it, I'd go for an IDA. It's a no-brainer, everybody agrees with that. The magic tax vary, as we said before, doesn't wave her wand and pay the taxes. We shall, we have that burden. And why is the developer offering to pay? And I ask you honestly, why is the developer offering to pay the village tax but not the school tax? Because that's the bigger number. I pay twenty-eight thousand dollars a year in taxes, I know that number's bigger. That's school tax number. Why don't they want to pay the school tax?
Sure. We'll start off two by two, saying the rents of each...
Okay, the rents are gonna range from twenty, I'm sorry. The rents are gonna range from twenty-nine fifty to about fifty-eight hundred to the free budget at the top. That will not include the affordable housing, which will be based upon the...
How much will the affordable housing be renting at?
Well, if you heard what I said before, it's gotta be a third of the median income of...
Yeah, but I need to know numbers, I need to know concrete numbers. Okay, I, I would need to know that before I made a decision.
So it's not based on a decision made on whether affordable can be in it or not, and what the rent is, that's based on the statute. So it's not a, that's not a discretionary decision by the board. And your last question was, why did we offer the village taxes? Because we know, we know, and I think everybody here knows, we are not gonna put many students in the schools, but we are gonna use police and fire...
But what did you do, though? Because there's no...
It's not like the...
We, we, we're not gonna have back and forth.
I'm just asking.
No, you said, you're...
We know that we are gonna use police and fire and other village services to a greater extent than we're gonna use the schools. So that's where that came from, or do you agree with that? That's where it came from. And one last compliment, the Navy, we produced a study that in developments like this, we will pay all village taxes, but in developments like this, the burden on the municipality for providing police, fire, roadwork, sanitation, is much less than for single-family dwellings. That's data, the study's done.
I get that, I agree.
So we are really gonna be overpaying in our village, but that's okay.
I just wonder about the school taxes, that, that was it. It's a big number, and if you do have these kids, how are you gonna pay that extra burden? We are, and, and that's what I think we all fear. And I don't think we, we're really thinking about affordable housing or not. Like, we'd love to offer people a place to live. I think everybody deserves a beautiful place to live and a great school system. I went through the school system, my daughter went through the school system. I just think you have to really think about this, because I just don't think we can absorb it. Our school numbers, as you know, are up.
And Betsy, just to reiterate your point, we did ask the school system for information. We did ask the school system for data. They have the information, they refuse to give it to us. So we can't, there's nothing else that we can do. They refuse to give us the information. So many of the questions that you're asking us, dealing with school, we as a board have asked on multiple occasions, and they have refused to give it to us.
Yeah, I just think like, numbers don't impress me. I think you can play with numbers any way you want. I just think you really have to think about what you're getting.
We are thinking about it. And let's not forget, as I said in the beginning, as counsel stated, A, we don't choose the idea. We don't control an idea. We cannot refuse the applicant's application based on whether or not they apply for or receive an IDA. If you want to go to the IDA hearing and argue they don't deserve it, go right ahead, okay?
It's scary.
Thank you.
That's why I got up to speak.
Who else who has not spoken yet? Yes, ma'am? Yeah, go ahead, sure.
Kathy O'Sullivan, 25 acre court, Garden City. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, for the numbers, I appreciate seeing the data. But my one question is, you're saying we're gonna get eighty-nine thousand dollars for school taxes, and two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars for, um... Village. But the one thing we do have to understand, and I'm assuming the village has this extra money, but the schools do not, and you can't transfer a line item from village to school, correct?
I am aware of no such... I am aware of no such thing as extra money, but go ahead.
But I mean, you couldn't, you know, if you were getting more money than normally would have with this agreement, as Mr. Walsh was saying, you would have gotten more money having a hundred and fifty units versus twenty-eight or twenty-five townhouses. He's saying it's a better deal, it's a win-win deal for the village. But that money can't be transferred to the schools. The school is, is at the loss. Okay, that's one. Number two, if we go to the IDA meeting, my question for you as a board, if the school board decides that they want to oppose the IDA, and they have facts to support that, and the residents are opposed to the IDA, would the board support those, the residents and the board in that decision? You would not?
We would not be there, no.
Okay.
At least we have not, we legally are not allowed. No, we're not legally allowed.
Okay, okay. Okay. My third question would be to Mr. Walsh. In looking at your renderings of the units now, it looks to me very different from what the original drawings you had proposed a few months ago. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the drawings that you had shown previously, when you said that the height would go up by scale away from Raymond Court, my understanding was it was going to be lower on Stewart and gradually increase towards the mall. I was not getting, I did not get that impression at all from that first rendering.
It, it goes up, I guess, you know, away from...
West to east.
West to east. Away from Raymond Court, but I never...
That wasn't my, but that, I don't feel like that first drawing that you showed to the EPOA.
This hasn't changed, Kathy, it hasn't changed. Same ones, we haven't redone the...
You didn't show a sketch? Previously, an artist's sketch?
No, it was not.
Okay. Okay, then I was wrong on that. But I would be opposed to the, to the height increase. Okay?
Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Yes, sir?
I'd like to go over some of the samples which were not discussed.
Excuse me, you say your name and... Do you have a microphone there, because it's hard to hear you?
Karchbend on Russell Road, I lived here for forty years. I'd like to discuss what's the rental, the annual rental. By my calculation, it's about six-and-a-half million dollars. Is that true?
It is in data we submitted, if you go to your second point, I'll try and pull it out.
Well, I figured about a hundred fifty units at three thousand five hundred a month, times twelve is about sixty-three, six-point-three. And then the other question I have, what's the total project cost? Forty million? Because if it's forty million, the interest expense is about three-point-two million, which means there is a profit before the taxes, about three million dollars. So in my opinion, it's a very profitable project for the developer. But I don't know whether the numbers I have are right, but from the discussion I have, that's what it simulates.
Okay, so the data we've submitted so far would be income of about five-point-four million dollars.
So it's not too far off.
Not too far off at all.
Yeah.
We have capitalization rate thirteen percent, so we have full value, so that we, we have to add in the capitalization of the debt. So there's expenses, operating expenses are about three million eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and then the calculation of the...
And what's the, if I could ask you, what's the project, the project cost approximately?
About sixty-five million.
Sixty-five million. Okay. Well, it's a little bit less profitable than I thought.
Don't say that, don't say that. We don't want a tax-er argument. Yes, sir?
Can you hear me? I have a cold.
I don't live here, so I haven't wanted to do that.
Let's, let's make this simple. So, can you hear me?
You can use yourself, and speak to us, please, not to the others.
My wife says that to me all the time. Thomas and Bertie, fifty-seven First Street. So let's make this simple. First rule, we don't pay taxes based on the services that we receive. Second point, he's paying all his village taxes, and he says he's not getting as much services as others get, but he's happy to do that. But when he comes to the school district, he's not happy to do that, and he doesn't want to pay school taxes. And he wants us to buy into the project that it's the number of kids that are going to the school, some hypothetical number, some hypothetical cost, and that's all he wants to do. And he wants to walk away from his full taxes, and he has to, and he has to, uses as an example that he's like at church and he's entitled to an example. I think that's absurd. But let me say this. Everybody pays on assessed valuation, and that's how we provide revenues for our schools, whether you have one kid, zero kids, six kids. That money goes to pay for all the services. We're not isolating garbage services, police services, and so on. It's education of children who live in Garden City, and the school district is a symbol of greatness, and that's why people want to come in here, and he should be as proud to pay his full village taxes as his... as he is proud to pay his kids. This is all about money, right? It's all, if he gets his pilot, and we don't know, it starts at a hundred thousand, it's going to go up to millions. And if he has it, he's talking about six or seven or eight million dollars. Instead of that money going into the schools, it's going into his pocket, and taxpayers are building his building. I say that's wrong, okay? He may have all the rights in the world to go to the IDA, but this is all about corporate greed. This project will stand alone and make him a prophet. He should be pleased to come in here and recognize what a wonderful village it is and what a wonderful school district it is, and pay his fair taxes. That's what everybody else does in town. You build a house, you get assessed on it, and you pay your taxes. You want to build a multifamily residence, and you don't want to pay your taxes. Well, guess what? It's a residence, you pay your taxes like residents. And I'll tell you something else.
You're still address us.
I understand that, but you have already taken your position. You can't control school taxes. And you've been talking basically to him. But I'm going to talk back to him, not in a...
No, you don't allow it. You don't allow it. You just follow the rules like everybody else.
All right. I want to make that point clear. It's our money, okay? These taxes belong to this school district. They shouldn't be used by a developer to build a building, and we'll fight it at the IDA. I don't think this is a project for the IDA. It's a single-family residence in an area which is not deteriorating, okay? This is an half-wood village. He's coming in here building a luxury apartment. Taxpayer's money shouldn't be used to support it. All the rest of this, how many kids go, and how much it's going to cost, it's nice talk, but it's irrelevant to the main issue. Pay your taxes like everybody else does. You come in here, you build a building, you move residents in, their kids go to the school. Great, just pay your taxes. Don't take it out of our pockets to build your building. Thank you.
Yes ma'am? Before, maybe as she's making her way up, just a question about the IDA process. What's kind of like the record of the IDA finding in favor of the developers? Is it a shoo-in? Is it a fifty-fifty?
Shoo-in.
I would ask Mr. Levin.
Yeah, Mr. Levin, maybe it's better that the developer's attorney doesn't answer that.
Well, the IDA, as many people may know, is a subject of great controversy. Many people have been unhappy with decisions that the town and the county IDAs have made over the past years. They've been very favorable, and I think, this is my opinion, they've been very favorable to developers. And there's a number of issues going on about whether they have been too favorable, mostly in commercial projects and whether they, which are designed, the purpose of the IDA is to create jobs, and whether they've ever followed up to find out if the jobs were actually created. I know there was a report issued about two weeks ago, I think, where they indicated how many jobs have been created over the twenty-five years of the IDA, but they didn't correlate that to how many have been promised, just how many have been created. And whether they're long-term or not weren't discussed either. The IDA, at least the county IDA, has undergone a significant change in the last few months with the change in county administration. So you may find that the IDA going forward is different than the one that was there before. I don't think there's any way to predict that. But the best short answer I can give you to your question is, the general impression the public is, they have been very favorable to developers. But most of the applications they get are industrial and commercial projects.
Thank you. Yes ma'am?
Hi. My name is Monica Kraus. I live at eighty-three Brook Street. And I did not grow up in Garden City. I married into it. I personally...
Okay, a couple generations you get to vote.
Yeah. Wait, I heard that. I heard that. And, you know, personally, for me, I'd like to see that space turned into a bubbled lacrosse field, but that's just me.
Wait a few weeks.
I mean, it's a beautiful building. I'll give you that. My concern is from the perspective of the numbers. And I volunteer a lot in the schools. That's why we moved here. When it was like, okay, Connecticut or Garden City, we came to Garden City for the schools. Because my husband and his whole family, they all went through, and that's why we're here. The schools are wonderful. Our teachers are amazing. They do so much with the budgets that they're stretched. And the numbers, the one thing I haven't heard, and it's not a hard number off of this, but just the consideration and the thought that people move to these beautiful apartments, a lot of houses in Garden City are now going to become, come on the market. And then families are going to also move into Garden City because those houses are available. And as a soft result of that, the numbers of students in the schools will increase. Again, that has nothing to do specifically with the development, but it is a possible... Scenario. That is a very likely scenario. My question is, and this is, I will admit, this is also my first village hall meeting. I've been to a couple BOE meetings. I've been to the EPOA meeting. I've been to two.
Tom's boy, they do a lot of fun.
And yeah, this is awesome. And, you know, thank you for all you do. I know you're not in an easy position. But I'm just, I'm confused as to, I feel like there's two separate entities kind of working against each other with the, and this is just from what I'm hearing tonight, the village trustees and the BOE. And I'm just confused why it's not one big kind of happy family, and we're not all working together. I'm just, I don't know what piece I'm missing. I understand the legal aspects of, you know, the IDA and who can approve, if someone's for it, you can't fight it, they can't support each other. But is it, is it really two separate groups? Are we really fighting this, not fighting this altogether, but looking for the best outcome altogether? Or is there a piece I'm missing that I've just haven't mentioned enough meetings to understand?
That's a loaded question. I think the issue is that where this board can't come out against the IDA, I guess legally.
Right.
So whereas the school board can. And also, which, while you're feeling like it's two separate entities, it's two different budgets.
Okay.
So they get about a hundred-and-twenty million dollars to run the schools, and we get about sixty or so to run the town.
But the point is, it is two separate entities.
Yeah.
Right. Right. That I understand.
Yeah.
It just feels so, and I'm not putting anybody on the spot here, but I would assume we would all want our schools to be good for, for the village, not just the children.
But it's beneficial for this all.
Absolutely.
And as I said before, this is one of the reasons why we asked for information. And we...
So what information? Because I'm happy to go to the next BOE meeting and address this. Like, what is this information that's up in the air? Is it something that the school actually has?
I'm sure they can get it.
Yeah.
So what is, what's the magic information? What are you looking for?
The topic of concern seems to be how many kids this might generate. It would seem to me relevant to know that of the one-thousand-plus apartments currently in the village, how many children emanate from those one-thousand apartments? Just irrelevant, just another fact in the whole mix of things.
And that school can be a relatively low number. Absolutely.
We don't know.
We don't know.
No.
We wish we had the information.
We can, at least we can educate, more educated assets.
And is that something the school board can legally give you? Can the, can the school board legally give that information? Yeah?
Yeah, sure.
They're not giving personal data.
Right. Right, they can't get personal. Okay. Thank you so much.
It includes, when I use the word apartments, it includes condos, co-ops, rental buildings. There's, there are many condos and co-ops that are rented. So apartments is all those things. Yes, whoever hasn't spoken? Come on up.
Kathy Wood, one-sixty-seven Tole Moore. I'm going to address my first couple of questions to Mr. Walsh, developer. Exactly, how many jobs are going to be created under the IDA?
This is for you to make comments. You may choose the answer, but this is not what this is. You make comments.
Thank you. So how many projected jobs will be created? Temporary, and can they break it out, temporary versus permanent, so we can justify the IDA? Do we have information on that?
If I may just interject, this is not something that's before the board. The board is considering the zoning of the property and the prospective development of property. Job creation, if there is any, is a subject for the IDA. We're not the IDA.
Questions like that are not what we...
Okay, thank you. Can he answer if he pays sales tax on building materials or recording tax according to property?
That's also part of the IDA's decision.
Okay. My understanding is they don't pay sales tax on building materials?
If the IDA, if that's what the IDA says. Not necessarily. All IDs are not the same. So, but that is, those are things the IDA can get.
So with respect to the number of existing units in the village, co-op, the condo, the apartments, as we refer to, Mr. Nunez, do you have breakout of the total number of units that we have existing in the village and the number of, the breakout by per bedroom, per unit? Do we have, do we already have three-bedroom units in the town? Oh, so we can't really compare?
There are three bedrooms. Health and health.
Yeah, they're three-bedroom condos.
Yeah, health and health.
So how many, do we know how many kids are coming out of the three-bedroom?
That's what we initially were asking. We weren't given.
What about the wheelchair count?
They won't know that.
Nobody knows that, but we can't compel them to give it.
Okay. Because I have four bedrooms, I have five kids, I have three bedrooms that kids are in, I have five kids in the bedroom. So it goes to that.
But there are plenty of people who have four bedrooms with one kid or no kids.
Yeah.
So how you, are you taking, are you trying to take an average? It's impossible.
No, I'm really just concerned about the number of kids because in our experience with the Avalon Bay project, the gentleman from Avalon Bay said that it would be three or four kids coming out of the project. And by the end of the conversation, and I'm sure you remember that we literally rhymed, it was at our EPOA meeting, we were closer to like fifty or sixty kids coming out through thorough questioning. We'll be able to compare oranges to apples to oranges. Now, I attended the PTA meeting last week, and the principal said that they're really very, very proud of the new report that came out that, you know, only accolades, that we're like a number one school district. And the thing that she found very impressive, and that we should be impressed at, is that with a declining budget and slashing services, we're able to provide such a high-quality products in our schools. And she did compare the fact that Syosset and Jericho spent almost double Colleen Mayno, like the numbers, per student to get the same quality of education. And so, is it great that we're efficient? Yeah, great. We could do really, really great on like a really poor budget. But how great can we do on a better budget? And all this is going to do by bringing more kids into the school is to plead the resources from the existing children and those students coming in. So what are we going to slash next? Are we going to slash the JV team? Are we going to slash the STEM program? Or we don't? Because our high school is pretty lean. Our budget is pretty lean at this point. So to keep going on and on and adding kids that are not really paying or pulling their weight is really not fair to them or to the existing students. And so I just ask that we consider that.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Yes, Sarah Black?
Rod Davis, sixty-two Third Street. Looking around here, I'm saying to myself, we all like to see this thing end up in a positive way. Two years from now, we all say, did the right thing, right? I think we'd like to see that. Which means you're probably going to have some element of affordable housing. You're going to have some element here of apartments. I've seen the pictures, and I've seen some numbers. But please, somebody tell me about the so-called developer. I've looked on the internet, and I've found out, Five-Fifty Limited Liability Corporation. As a man, I can find nothing about other than the fact that he's been a very successful jeweler. Does the board know what the credentials, what the achievements, what the failures have been of this developer? We have a hundred-and-fifty units in a major Long Island city, excuse me, village. And what do we know about this firm? Please tell us all about the credentials. Give me a second. She fell down.
It's my case maker.
As you found, F.E. Hermesian is a very successful jewelry manufacturer. High-end jewelry, very successful at what he does. He has given me, international sales, actually. He has given me three of his properties that he has bought. Real estate in Manhattan. He owns three separate buildings in Manhattan. He just acquired his last one in two thousand sixteen.
He bought.
He bought.
He bought, is that correct?
He bought.
He bought.
He bought. So he is very successful in everything he does. He owns plenty of real estate, and he's well-equipped to do this. He will be retaining someone to construct this. He's not going to construct it himself. He does not have his own team to do it. He's been meeting with developers and with construction companies. But he needs to wait and see whether he's got a building to build.
Have you given this information to the trustees? Do you have all this information?
The information I just...
Yes.
Well, it's now a matter of the record.
I didn't ask you that. Have you given to them before they made the decisions they made so far?
No, I had not given any of that information.
So we have a quote developer who has purchased, who owns several buildings in Manhattan. And he's going to hire certain people to develop this property. Just think about that. Now, having been in the real estate business for more than fifty consecutive years, having lived in this town for fifty-three years, having at one time managed five billion dollars in nineteen, excuse me, nineteen, two thousand and one, I think I know a little bit about this. It's more than just pictures and numbers and very competent representatives of the so-called developer. You, everybody here has the right to know about the credentials of the developer of this project because it's been ten years since we had a wait. And it'll be two or three more years before this project is mature, if it's built and successful. And lots of bad things can happen. I'd like to see a so-called developer who's done this before, not just bought and owned properties. And so should you. Thank you.
I just have a question.
Do you think so? No. Organized. So Ms. Dowling has been waiting to respeak, so please go right in.
I was told that the IDA... I was told that the IDA, success of the IDA is that they give away their money because then they sell bonds, and they get interest on those bonds. So they give IDAs very, very little. Mostly commercial, as you said, but some residential. And so, I don't get an IDA one-two-two. And so, I don't get an IDA once, two, three. And I also wonder why this community is so angry, totally angry, and calling me and other people racist. I don't understand.
First of all, anybody can come here, this is a meeting.
No, they can come here, they care...
Excuse me, anybody can come to this meeting and speak.
And call us racist.
Again, he did not call you.
Yes, he did.
He quoted a federal court.
He called us racist. But you know what? I am not a racist. I personally got many peoples that their dream talks, Hispanic and African Americans, and I got their lawyers in trouble because of this scam.
Ma'am, ma'am, please stay on topic. Ma'am, please, please stay on the proposed here, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm just telling you.
Ma'am.
So anyone who calls me a racist...
Ma'am, ma'am, this is not, this is not the time to play. We're here to talk about the development.
Well, that's fine.
Okay, that's the only fault we're talking about. Ma'am, ma'am, we're not going to get into this, you have to stop. We're here to talk about the development. We're here, if you want to talk about the development, you can speak all you want, okay? I'm just telling you, this is, let's stay on topic, I'm not going to get into something else that you perceive differently. This is what we're talking about, this is what all these people came for tonight, is to talk about the development. So stay on topic or you need to sit down, one of the two, whichever it is.
I understand people...
Ma'am, that's it, okay, we're done, we're done, we're done, we're done. Please, you're done, ma'am, yeah, you're done, that's it, you've asked four times.
I'm asking Mr. Nelson to build this development without an IDA, like pays taxes, then it's fine. I'm not against affordable housing, that's fine. Anyone can live in this village, we all know it. And, and this is ridiculous.
Thank you.
And when they said how much he's making on us is really disgusting.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Sorry, I don't think you need the microphone. Is this the same developer that owns the property across the street for the last ten years?
It is.
So what would happen if he gets this approved, can he build across the street, is that part of it?
It has nothing to do with this, totally different.
And that's not Garden City School system of ours?
Yes, it is.
So that was my question.
Ma'am, the mayor's shirt hasn't spoken.
My name is Peter Florio, I live at sixty-nine Nassau Boulevard. I just want to let the board know, totally opposed to this project. For many reasons, as I stated before, by other residents and my neighbors and my friends, and what I speak to about this proposal of this new, this building here of a hundred and fifty units, everybody seems to be against it. And I just wanted to put that on record. Thank you.
Anyone else, again, who hasn't spoken already? Seeing none, I assume... Yes, ma'am.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Renuto, you had spoken and said that in all your diverse living in the village, you've never gone to school. You had gone to school with two people who came from an apartment. I would just ask the board to not just confine yourselves to just apartments in the village, but I think you should also think about renters. I know on my own street on Raven Court, almost half of the housing on Raven Court is rental and there are many students in those houses, some of them are only two bedroom. But I would expand, not to just think of just apartment buildings, but also rental units, because some of those people who are renting possibly live in that where they wouldn't have the property to take care of, you know?
Does anybody up here who isn't interested in trying to forecast the number of children? Everybody in here is trying to cut it up different ways of figuring it out, so that was my experience, that's why I brought it up.
Right, right.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
I have a question for Mr. Walsh and Mr. Levin. With what frequency in your negotiations or experience in this kind of, these projects, I'm sure you're an expert, both of you, have you seen a school district be able to negotiate being made home on their taxes? Is it usually, have you seen it before?
No, generally there's a negotiation. As in most negotiations, not everybody, nobody gets everything that they want. So generally there's negotiation, but...
But you have seen with some frequency...
I've seen negotiation, I haven't seen the school district get everything it wants. The question is reasonability always on both sides.
Okay.
Oh, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I'm out again, I'm forty-eight Washington. I know you're here about zoning, but I did want to just say that I am totally against the pilot. As a community owner here, I think that people move to our district for two reasons. One is the wonderful community we live in and the other is the schools and school taxes should be paid. Is there any consideration that maybe the pilot wouldn't be as long as it is? Like the length of time of the pilot?
That would be part of a discussion with the IDA, I'm sorry, part of a discussion with the IDA.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. They see none, can I get a motion to close the hearings? Thank you, if you have, if you have written comments...
Hey, it was just, if you were about to cover what I was just going to say. And if the board is going to vote closely here, do you want to also set the additional period of time for people to submit written comments?
Yeah, today is, what, the seventh? How about next Wednesday, which is the thirtieth? If you have written comments, please feel free to submit them, send them to the village, I guess via our village clerk, Ms. Alton. You can email it or drop it off, whatever you want. You have a motion to vote for closing. Our senior lady makes that motion, seconded by trustee Freinos. All those in favor? Yes, thank you.
May I ask, in anticipation of the meeting on the twenty-first...
Yes.
...and so that we can prepare whatever documents may be needed, can I get a sense from the board of what they would like to do about the issue of the height of the part of the building that would contain the...
Right, discuss that, yes. Well, if you, could you summarize the issue?
Yes, the, basically, the village is proposing a zoning law change that...
If you could, please, keep it down.
Excuse me, if you're leaving, you think you'd be quiet?
Thank you.
Village is considering a zoning law change that would max the height of this building out at forty-five feet. The applicant has complied with that with respect to most of the building, but is proposing the center portion, it's visible, above the port of the chair, the entrance, which would be maximum, I think of about fifty-three feet for just that small portion of the building in order to have the fitness club in that particular area. The present text of the law would not permit that. And they suggested, as you see then, that they can comply with the law if they move that fitness center facility to one of the lower portions of the building, which would then raise the profile of the building at that point instead, but still be under the forty-five feet maximum. So it's a question of what the board prefers. There's a way for them to do it, but they've indicated what that would look like if they did do it that way. Or we could revise the text of the proposed law that would permit the board to allow a small portion of the profile of the building to exceed that forty-foot, forty-five foot limit. And the measurement, I think, was no more than ten percent of the horizontal distance of the elevation of the building.
In other words, the zoning planning change committee, did I say that right? Had some comments both ways, some of firewood, some not.
It's okay, I don't think they should build the taller than they're going out for. There's no reason to hire an architect, there's no reason to hire outside the hives, design engineers, you go for the diaphragm.
But Lou, the problem with that, as I see it, is by moving it to where they're suggesting to move it, I think, just...
I agree, I don't think that's a good solution, I think that's...
That's not a good solution at all.
Probably do six minutes in the car, blow over, I'm just saying, like, design it properly and keep within eye protection. This is a board, you guys can vote a different way.
Kevin, how, what's the height of that section? What is the height? He said a proxy.
The fitness center, I think, is fifty-six. It's ten feet higher than the...
So it's fifty-six, not fifty-three.
So it's in that picture, I know a picture is a picture, but it's that center median area. Is the, is the facility in the mansard roof or is it higher and then there's the roof?
No, it's within the green, I'm sorry.
It's in within the green area of the mansard roof. This building was only studied, obviously, as you see it, but there's a balance associated with it, as you can tell. This was on for the committee early on. And obviously, it can be moved, you can always do it, to design a brand-new building to accommodate that, there are very few locations it can be. We intended, the idea that it shouldn't go any higher than the statute, that's a proposed statute that's before you, that you make a decision on. So you can make the decision to say for non-livable or sleeping quarters, limited to ten percent as an amenity, when you pick, particularly when you, when you design a stepped-back building, it's not like we're asking to stick it on a box building that has had elevation all through it and we just want another, we want more room. We meet the zoning criteria established. This is the only, this is the only element that was not, the statute wasn't crafted to cover.
You're just probably not going to change it much. I still think you should stay within eye protection.
Mr. Levin, does this have any effect generally elsewhere or this is a...
Well, I think we would endeavor to write it in a way where it would not have any effect elsewhere. As I said earlier, this is actually the only property in the village that's subject to the zoning that we're talking about and it's something that would be allowed only with the board of trustees' approval to exceed that forty-five foot height limit for this portion of the building.
Mr. Walsh, I have a question.
Yes.
Except for the section in the middle where this, I guess the gym is going to be, okay? Is there any other section of the entire complex that exceeds the height?
No, well, the cap, the mansards in the corners, but I think they were just a coat, they're just decorative. The green on the corners, but they don't go nearly that high, they're a few, five feet. And they're just separate halls, of course, there's nothing behind them, this is the only area of useful space.
Mr. Levin, do we need to decide that or...
I'm trying to get some direction from the board because we have the draft of revision to the text, it's not a material revision, but it's a small revision. And what I'm looking at is the state law requirement that when you adopt a local law, you're supposed to have the actual text of that law in your possession for at least seven days before you adopt it, unless the mayor certifies there's a need to add it without waiting the seven days. So what we're trying to do is to get ahead of the seven days and give you a version of the law that has that particular portion limit. What we could do is compromise for the moment, it's just, we're just kicking the cane down the road, is I can give you two versions of the law and when the time, you'll have them both for seven days and then when June twenty-first rolls around, you're going to have to make a decision.
Mr. Walsh, I have one other question. The green part that's above the middle part there, okay? The part that's below, I don't know if I can say it straight, below the green part, below, okay? Are all the other roofs along that strip, are they all the same height of that base?
Yes.
So in other words, so if you were to move that, you would have to put it on one of the wings.
That's the only, you have to put it on a lower, a lower tier.
Right, okay, but that's what I'm just trying to understand.
The lower tiers are...
Because moving it to the left or the right would make any difference, you have to move it to one of the wings.
I don't want to be the advocate for the developer, but I think the point he was making earlier was that if you were to put that, move that to one of the lower wings of the building, the building was designed with the lowest wings closest to Raven Court to lower the profile of the building, you'd be raising the profile of the building closest to Raven Court if you do that.
A very good point.
Okay.
Could you also reduce the size of the gym or reduce the number of units to accommodate a gym that size?
Well, the gym, the gym meets and the size of the building of all of its training meets the statute. So we wouldn't want to lose a gym or make it smaller or make the apartment smaller, we would figure a place to put it and move it closer to Raven Court. And that's because it fits all the other criteria, it's not like we've opened up this building, it's a design feature that, it's a design feature that permits the statute.
What is underneath the gym?
Apartments, the third floor, the fourth floor apartments. Okay, that's the apartments.
Well, I think we, Mr. Levin, I think we need to have an alternative for what the gym has.
I'd say there are enough instructions to get it.
So we have to decide on the secret portion?
Yes, that's the next thing I'd ask you to do, is consider the secret. Okay, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, there's been extensive discussion of the impacts of the building. The applicant has gone through the normal application process, has presented the village with a lot of data regarding all those impacts, they filled out their environmental assessment form. It's been reviewed extensively and in great detail by our consultants, H2N, and their sub consultants at Nelson Pope. And they have made a recommendation to the board, made a first recommendation, which is quite lengthy, goes through each of the elements of the environmental study and points out what the factors are, what impacts may exist, whether they're significant, and whether they be mitigated in the proposal. H2N's conclusion, the end, was to make the secret negative declaration, which means no further environmental study is due, we'll still have to finish the study of the project itself. And I prepared a resolution for you, which we circulated the other day, which went through that entire description, the explanation of all of the studies that were done, and the explanation of all the conclusions that were being reached, and reaches a negative declaration. So if the board is willing to do that or if you want to make changes in it, that's something that's appropriate at this point.
Is it, do we need to read it in the record or we have copies?
I think all the board members have copies, it was distributed to them about two days ago. And I'm assuming that if you did do this, you would be adopting a resolution that was circulated, and it would be part of the...
I would make a motion for the negative declaration, adopting the recommendation of our consultants for the negative declaration. I have a second on that motion, the senior lady's seconded, so we get a vote on that, to adopt that. Any votes in favor? unanimous, you approve? Thank you. And again, we'll be preparing the language for alternative height.
Yes, and in anticipation that the board is going to vote on the project itself on June twenty-third, I guess that they want, the contemplation is not humane, but that's the intention.
That's the intention.
Prepare for that.
That's the intention.
Prepare for that as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, we would now move to any general comments. Any general comments from persons in the audience regarding general nature, please talk on the floor.
Jerry Kelly, one thirty-five Stewart Avenue. I had two student ambassadors here earlier, they had to leave, they had to get ready to do homework. Harry Murphy was here then, Cap Chojenko. I wanted to salute Robert Cunningham, one of my old neighbors from the central area. Tonight, what you just saw was sort of what a zoning hearing's like, and he's been doing that for thirty-plus years or so, and I think that's to be commended. And when you see him, just make sure you give him credit. The other thing I wanted to do is just, we said goodbye yesterday to Bill Flynn, a resident of Second Street. And I want to thank the police for coming out and directing traffic for the dignitaries that were there. Bill Flynn was a huge part of Irish history. He was someone who invited Jerry Adams over, Sinn Finn, the IRA, over to the United States back in nineteen ninety-six to cure the troubles, to cure the troubles in Ireland. And he was a major impact of that. So on the macro level, Bill Flynn was someone who was really a wonderful man. But what I want to take a second for is something that Colleen knows, is that he also had a family here. Jimmy Flynn was in our class and he was a great guy, and to get ready for the basketball season, he decided to run track. And he ran track so well, he ran it for Villanova. And he was just someone who was really a fire person, really wonderful. But the Flynn family had such an impact in Garden City. Mr. Flynn went to St. Joe's Gym one day and he was so impressed with the way the referee handled the game, it was kind of like a wild game, CYO, you know, the whole drill. And, but he asked, who is that referee? And the referee was Peter Brincato. And someone said, oh, you know, he's looking for a job. And Mr. Flynn goes, oh, really? Well, we'll get him down to... Well, we'll get him down to Mutual of America. Bill Flynn was the chairman of Mutual of America. And Peter Brincato lasted, I think he was with Mutual of America twenty-plus years. And it was a wonderful story of looking at basketball from a different framework, but of looking at a person like Bill Flynn and the impact he had on this village. Because the story I tell you tonight could be multiplied by twenty or thirty times. He was a huge part of Irish history, but he was a huge benefactor. And the list of his charities will go on for, but his family was great. He's left with Bill Flynn, his daughter, Maureen, who lives in town, and many grandchildren, and of course Jimmy Flynn, in heaven right now, who just became a grandparent. And it's a wonderful story of a person that made a huge impact both internationally and domestically. So I want to thank the police department for giving him the send-off that he deserved. God bless you.
Yes, ma'am?
This is for other bits.
Great.
I believe, Mr. Groberg, we had a conversation about sidewalks.
Well, you sure.
We had a conversation about sidewalks.
You had asked me, you had asked me about that. And I said before, and I said to you, it was part of the streetscape project, it's something that Bill located. Yes.
And you said that it was almost one thing to do, was concrete down, it was two bricks.
No, no, what I said was, that's one of the options. What I said was, is that, what I said to you was, is that even when we do the streetscape project, we cannot just simply put the pavers down the way that they are today. They would not follow the regulations that exist today, so therefore, we would have to do something different.
But you told me we couldn't do this.
No, I said we'd have to put, if we did the bricks, we'd have to put a strip of forty-eight inches of concrete in the middle.
No, no, you don't. We need the law. I had the law cut down, I was saying.
Okay, thank you.
Now I want to tell them. And the bricks can be put down, but they have to be set properly. And I'm sure we can find a bricklayer who can do that, so that Seventh Street will look the way it was, instead of the concrete thing. That's one of the options. And I'm going to email you. I have your card, I have your.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no other comments or questions? Yes, we actually do have to go into executive session to deal with some personnel matters. Mr. Lanning makes that motion, seconded by Trustee Freenow. We have a motion to end this public portion of the evening and go into executive session? All those in favor? Yes. Thank you.